Welcome everyone to the December 9th council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 5:00 PM. Could I call on councillor Hunt please for the land acknowledgement?
I would like to acknowledge that the rural municipality of St Andrews is located on 3D1 territory, the traditional lands of the Anishinaabe Cree, OJie Cree, Dakota and Dene people, the national homeland of the Red River Maki. We respect the spirit and intent of treaties and treaty making and remain committed to working in partnership with First Nations, Inuit, Maki people and in the spirit of truth, reconciliation and collaboration.
Thank you. Adoption of the agenda. Be it resolved that council adopt the agenda as presented. Could I have a move down there? Councillor Slaker, Secondar, Councillor Hunt, all those in favor. Unanimous, that is carried. Next item is the planning and related planning process of our meeting. The first item 4.1 is subdivision application number S25311910 Ash Avenue. This is a non-public hearing. Madam Platter, could you please proceed?
First item subdivision application S253119 located on 10 Ash Avenue and purpose of that application is to subdivide the subject land of 43.5 acres into one additional lot. Here we can see your location map of the subject property and applicant subdivision application map with the proposed changes. Okay, according to the bylaw of St Andrews in A8 agriculture general zone, they require side areas and with support to 80 acres and 300 feet wide lots and they proposing in the proposal number one 2.73 acres and more than 300 feet wide and residual lot that will be created by that will be more than 80 acres and more than 300, sorry, plus the 80 acres and more than 350 feet in width. So both of them are not in compliance zoning by law with the size. And our analysis here is the proposed subdivision of A8 agriculture general zone and designated as the SC settlement center. Both proposed individual laws do not comply with the zoning by law is both smaller than, as I mentioned before, 80 acres required. Therefore, it will, it would require variance to bring it into compliance and the proposed subdivision meets the policy of agriculture and general zone and develop and plan settlement center designation. Therefore, the RPD recommends that application be approved and subject to conditions. And our recommendation here if office would recommend the following, our office would recommend the following petition. Applicant on a submission information and writing for the municipality stating that taxes on the land to be subdivided would be paid payment of the capital development leaves to dedication of the public preserved lands not exceed 10% of the subject plant. Applicant on a submit written confirmation from Manitoba Highway about the easement that they're acquiring and applying and applicant on a top 10 variance approval for both undersized proposed and residual lots as a result of the subject proposal and a Manitoba Land Service to provide a verified side area and width for the residual lots. This is all that I have, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant here to speak to this? I noted there was something in here. Is this the one that they want to dedicate land to the RM?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're proposing to dedicate some land for park.
Yeah. Would you be able to speak to this?
I was in a discussion with the applicants and I believe they had in their letter of intent, they'd like to dedicate the 10% to the municipality to be kept as either park space or green space. Being in the settlement center, sounds like a fantastic idea. Whether council is open to that? I'm not sure, is the applicant here?
Okay, so do they require development agreement for this or is where would this, is there a couple of discussion required on this, the 10 acres?
We had a condition of approval for being the 10%. If we wanted to be specific with that, we could look at entering a development agreement just purely focused on that piece. They did mention they ideally like to keep that land as natural as possible. I believe they planted many trees there, would like to keep those in place. So perhaps there's specifics or conditions or where is that land? Where is that to be located? Alternatively, since it's just the one item, we can negotiate that and bring it back in for council when that plan would be registered, right? So that council can review the area.
Okay, council fine with that?
Yeah.
Okay, where is the applicant? Owner of tax rule number 65900 has made application for subdivision S253119 for the premises described as 10 Ash Avenue. The purpose is to subdivide subject land into one additional lot of 2.73 acres. The planner has read out all of the conditions. Are there any questions? Does anybody have any questions or comments? Okay. Can I have a move up please? Councillor Slaker, Secondar, Councillor Hunt, all those in favor? That is unanimous, it is carried. Now we will open the public hearings. Okay, first we'll review the planning hearing process. Welcome everyone to the planning portion of our meeting. The hearings will proceed as follows. Red River Planning staff will present the application. The applicant will make a presentation on the application. Those registered in support will make a presentation and the post will then make a presentation. The applicant will then have the opportunity to respond to comments or concerns raised by council representative. At the end of each presentation, council may ask for clarification but will not enter into debate. All person speaking must address the chair one at a time you will be called upon. Once a public hearing is closed, there will be no more presentations accepted on the matter and discussion will be amongst council, not the audience. Council will then consider each matter separately and provide a decision. So thank you and we will now proceed. The first item, we won't open the public hearings. Be it resolved that the planning portion be started at 5:40 PM. Could I have a move up please? Councillor People Corin, Secondar, Deputy Mayor Morecki, all those in favor? That is unanimous, it is carried. We'll start with variation order number 1162025, 1023 Breezy Point Road and Whiskey Ditch Road. Madam Platter, could you please proceed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So yeah, this is a variance petition, 01162025 located on 1023 Breezy Point Road West and Whiskey Ditch Road. And the purpose of that application is to reduce the minimum lot size for the proposed lots and one residual lot as a part of the conditions. So then could be approved subdivision S25309. According to the zoning by law of St Andrews in A40 agricultural limited zone, the size and the width of each lot supposed to be 40 acres minimum and 20 feet wide. And their proposing proposal number one 4.6 to 7 acres in big and whatever they provide. Proposal number two, 10.85 acres and width more than 300. And proposal number three is going to be 23 acres big and residual lot under title that is mentioned here will be less than 40 acres, uh, more than 40 acres. Less than 40 acres, yeah, and 300 feet. So the air location map we can see here of the proposed property and site plan of the approved division, we have to see the proposed lots and conditions of approval. Should council wish to approve this application, the RPD recommends the following conditions. Standard, this variance is limited to what is being presented. Any other changes will require new variance approval and applicant on obtains all required permits from Red River Planning and proven municipality is required. Thank you.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions of the plan? Is the applicant here to speak? Oh, councillor Slaker?
It's been a long time since I did math, but just humor me here. On the proposed application, it is greater than 40 acres for the residential lot.
Yeah, it's supposed to be. That's why I was confused. That's why we'll have a variance for it. It's just a time limit, it's supposed to be less than 40 acres.
Great. Okay, any other questions? Is the applicant here to speak to the matter on Whiskey Ditch Road? No, there's not. Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Variation order number 1192025, 504 Corinne Avenue and 501 Talia. Madam Platter, please proceed.
So this is the variance, 01192025 located on the 504 Corinne Avenue and 501 Talia Avenue. And purpose of that application is to allow a cardiac shelter garage accessory structure to be constructed on the subject property. According to the zoning by law of St Andrews in RA suburban residential zone, agriculture structure is supposed to be 15, 15 feet maximum. They proposing 16.5 feet. Number of accessory structures in practice per certificate is supposed to be two maximum, maybe three. And combined floor area for the accessory building is supposed to be 400 square feet and they're closing 18, 12 square feet. So here we can see our location map of the subject property and I should mention that they actually own two pieces of the land here and combined floor area for the accessory structures because two pieces of land actually written on the same order and same tag. That's why they have those additional variance to add. And some site plan from the applicant for the proposed shelter garage and conditions of approval. Should council wish to approve this application, the RPD recommends the following conditions. This variance is limited to what is being presented. Any other changes will require a new variance approval and applicant on obtains all required permits from us, province and municipalities required. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions on the application? Is the applicant here to speak to this matter?
We had received an email from applicant that unable to attend, yeah.
Yeah. So there's my questions.
This choker, is this like a soft shell or is this a hard, like a permanent structure?
I, the way it is, according to the additional information you can see inside of the package, it's kind of material, I think. One that's in the package, yeah, it's supposed to be not, kind of, yeah, it's not the harsh one.
Oh, the applicant is manufacturer, okay.
Any other questions?
There would be a cement floor or?
Um, they haven't mentioned that, but we will have the option for them to be five inch four for that specific reason, for them to have any base foot as they want to.
The floor is being raised now.
Yeah, that's why they asking, we suggest them to ask little bit more for them to have a buffer.
Oh, okay. Any other questions? Very fine, we'll move on to conditional use applications. Conditional use number 562025, 112 Call the Rope.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. So conditional use application see you 562025 located on 112 Call the Rope. And purpose of that application is to establish a daycare center hidden garden on subject property at Maki Thomas School Zone in RR rural residential zone. So according to the zoning by law of St Andrews in RR rural residential zone, daycare center is conditional, so they asking a daycare as a conditional use and it's gonna be before and after school activity. Here we can see our location map of the subject property and some site plan where exactly it will be located inside of a school facility. And conditions of approval. Should council wish to approve this application, the RPD recommends the following conditions. This conditional use is limited to what is presented in this application. Any other changes will require a new conditional use approval. Applicant on obtains all required permits from us, municipality is required. Hours of preparation shall be Monday to Friday between 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Vehicle partners associated with daycare shall not be contained on the side. Sorry, no parking, shall be permitted on color, sugar plane, indoor drive or outdoor place. All signings shall comply with the municipality's zoning by law and daycare operator shall obtain and maintain a valid and old business license from the municipality. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Council members, does anybody have any question? Go ahead.
Just a question here, the applicant is Lord Southwood School Division.
Yeah, it's their maintenance manager. Their maintenance manager who is a pastor.
Is there any, the applicant here wishes to speak? I'm not seeing anything on the note, but just tell for one. Any further questions, go ahead, councillor People Corin.
Is there a timeline on this? They said how long they want this to be arranged? I was gonna say no timeline.
Exactly.
Any other options, time, no time in school? Okay, any other questions? Okay, hearing is done, we'll move on to the subdivision. Subdivision number S253020. Now I have a bunch of notices here to read. There appears enough signatures to proceed to the municipal board here, but staff will have to continue through the binder because it was just presented late, not much time before the meeting started. So under the planning act, if a zoning by law receives sufficient objections, under provincial legislation, if the municipality receives 300 or more objections to a zoning by law at the public hearing, a special two-stage objection process is required. Here is how that process works. Number one, first, the public hearing proceeds as normal. Everyone who wishes to speak or submit a written objection may do so and council will hear all representations. Number two, after the hearing is closed, council must make one of two decisions. Council may grant the bylaw second reading or council may pass a resolution not to proceed with the bylaw. If council grants second reading, the municipality must then send a formal notice under section 76.3 of the planning act to every person who objected at this hearing, whether they submitted a written objection, signed a petition or presented in person. Once that notice is sent, a second objection period starts. Those who receive the notice will have at least 14 days to submit a second objection to the municipality. After that second objection period closes, if we receive fewer than 300 objections, council may proceed to consider a third reading of the bylaw with no further notice. If we receive 300 or more objections, the bylaw must be referred to the municipal board for review and the board becomes the decision-making authority. Because this application includes both a subdivision and a zoning by law amendment, both items are being presented together. Council will make a decision on subdivision S253121st, followed by zoning by law amendment number 4423. So that explains, and I know it's hard to understand, but if you want a copy, we give you a copy, you'll get notification. That is the first notice. Before we begin with the hearing for subdivision S253120 and the zoning by law amendment number 4423, I would like to remind council and all participants of the legal requirements that govern this process. When council considers an application under the planning act, we are acting in a quasi judicial capacity. This requires that council approach the matter with an open mind, free from creep judgment and base its decision solely on the information and evidence presented at this hearing. Procedural fairness requires that all parties receive the same information at the same time and that no member of council has formed or expressed an opinion in advance of the hearing. Any perception that a decision has been made beforehand can compromise the integrity and defensibility of the process. I will now address a matter that applies generally to all council members. Councillors must avoid statements or actions that could create a reasonable perception of bias or prejudgment. If any member of council believes that they may have made comments or taken actions that could affect their ability to consider this application impartially, they are expected to declare that at this time and recuse themselves from participating in the hearing and subsequent votes. For the record, I will now ask, does any member of council wish to declare a conflict of interest, prejudgment or an inability to remain impartial in this matter?
I'd like to make a statement. It's about a 13-minute speech, if I may.
Uh, no, at this point, the question is, does any member of council wish to declare a conflict of interest, prejudgment or inability?
At this time, I would like to make a speech, I am, uh...
No, I'm sorry.
I have the floor, so...
I'm sorry, but the CEO and myself had a Zoom conversation with legal counsel. Right now!
I have been elected by these people. Let's follow recess.
We'll call, yeah, we'll call a recess.
We can't stay in order. Okay, then I'll recuse myself. If that's, if you won't let me speak in this, in this forum, I will not recuse myself.
We are following legal counsel.
Yes, and I'm following your, your advice, the CEO's advice and all of council's advice.
We are following legal advice.
No, I won't be recusing myself, I'm not saying speak.
Okay.
There's no recusing.
Or he's not recusing himself.
Are you an elected official there, the one that's sitting with the...
If a member?
No, I'm the CEO and, and we're having a hearing in order here, so...
I just, I don't...
You will, don't mean, I will be recusing myself after I speak.
You will be recu, you will have the opportunity to speak, but this is not the point that you will be doing that.
Don't recuse yourself.
Are you declaring a conflict of interest, prejudgment or an inability to remain impartial in this matter?
I admit to a email that I sent where I viewed my opinion.
Councillor Mauder, the question?
I don't think, I still think I can be impartial.
Absolutely. That's what opinion is.
You've just said you're going to recuse yourself.
If I, if you, if you would let me speak.
This is not the point where you do this.
I'm an elected official, I represent the essence of my work and this is my opportunity to speak to this person.
The ward system, we have six wards in the SRM. The ward system is strictly for the election purposes. Members are elected and campaigned in one ward. Once you are elected, you represent the best interest of the R and...
Okay, so I'm representing the best interest of all of the...
This is not time for debate. It's a question of recuse or we can recess or you can move forward with...
Do you want to recuse?
Speak during your vote, recuse yourself, speak during your vote.
Okay, we'll take a recess.
Just remember what you said. Best interest of the people, you're elected.
Will we just stay here while you go out and smoke or what? Is there a mind frame for this?
For him, then, at the last. Yeah.
Hey, thank you, everyone. Now, we want to resume order in chambers. And that's the reason we took the recess, and if maybe we will take another recess. Uh, Counselor Mondo has declared he will recuse himself. And after discussion with legal counsel prior to the meeting, in light of email communications between Counselor Mondo and a resident wherein Counselor Mondo has stated his position prior to the public hearing without first hearing details of the application, of the applications, he has created a perception of bias and prejudgment. This is a breach of the Manageable Planning Act, the Municipal Act, and our bylaws. This is unfair to the applicant and could expose the municipality to challenges and appeals from the acci- from the applicant, which could be quite costly to the taxpayers. Failure to recu- um, yes. To recu-, failure to recuse himself will now result in administration contacting legal counsel. And the public hearings on the agenda, oh, Counselor Siker?
Uh, Mayor To, just so that we all understand, and I guess this is really complicated.
I'm sorry.
We, I'd like to read out the email that, uh, Counselor-
Oh, read it.
For, I think, I-
I've read it.
I've read it.
Counselor Liker has the floor.
Oh, so I had the floor before I had the speech.
November twenty-seventh at six thirty-six P M, Counselor Mondo sent to a resident along with council, Red River Planning. Yes, I'm not in favor of it coming before council, before our bylaws are updated and amended. I tried to voice my concerns with council about this, but again, they want it before them. It seems very convenient that this is coming up after that awful side-by-side Bologna pass with the rest of council. I am not in favor of five-point acre lots in pre-existing neighborhoods. Once you become a councillor, you learn really quick. As a taxpayer, I would have said that myself. Any of you that followed the, uh, sewer, stuff that went on, I went to every meeting and I thought like that. But once you become a councillor, the rules all change.
I want to clarify.
Rehearsal?
Excuse me. I'd like to clarify in Counselor Mondo's email, where he says he tried to vote council and just talk up, council, Red River Planning applicants go to Red River Planning to fill out an application. They cannot turn down an application. Council has absolutely no say beforehand, what, at any time, and what comes before this council. Until we see it on our agenda, we have no say in any application. And I just wanted to clarify that. Uh, so, uh, this will now result in administration contacting legal counsel and the public hearings on the agenda to date will be adjourned until January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-six, as we're unable to proceed with Counselor Mondo's actions. So, thank you. The, the hearing will not be, neither hearing will be going on.
Good. January what?
Twenty-sixth. January twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
And there we go, notice nailed up.
Are you enjoying? There's only case letter now?
It's, uh, uh-
Can he read his, uh, what he was gonna read now?
It's adjourned until
when you move over.
It's adjourned, so no-
We continue with the public hearing then. So they said table it, so we will-
Yeah, we don't send out any notice, but we'll put notice on our website.
Okay, you will not get noticed in the mail individually about January twenty-seventh, so we'll have it on our website.
Yeah.
We need to write it down now in a protocol, the future date.
Yeah.
That we're tabling, you know, in public hearing, we haven't closed it.
No.
So, that's a tabling for the date of twenty-seventh.
Okay, so then we're tabling it to January twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
Twenty-twenty-six.
The public hearing is gonna be still on date?
Yeah.
Okay, so thank you all. Sorry for the inconvenience. But we also have legislation and laws to follow too.
She's not wearing her phone.
When did you-
Yes, I don't, we are chilling with posing the public.
Should they not come this October? Are we telling you, tabling something, add their resume?
They have-
Yeah, can you put it off till October?
They have resolved that the actual hereby close the public hearings for the December ninth, twenty-twenty-five county applications. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Bieber, foreign, secondar, uh, Deputy Mayor Morecking, all those in favor?
There's some, I got a question. Uh, I'll have it exposed. Um, will we be putting all the letters of opposition and everything submitted on the next hearing as well? So that these don't get lost?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, that is unanimous, that is carried. Resolution for decision for variation order number one-one-six-two-oh-two-five. Whereas the applicant owner of tax roll numbers three-two-three-eight-hundred, three-two-four-one-hundred, and three-two-four-three-fifty has made application for variation order number one-one-six-two-oh-two-five. So the premises described as ten twenty-three Breezy Point Road and Whiskey Ditch Road. Okay, you're-
You're running the exercise.
Well, holy-
Okay, here. Okay, I'll turn that over. Resolution for decision for variation order number one-one-six-two-oh-two-five. Where is the applicant owner of tax roll numbers three-two-three-eight-hundred, three-two-four-one-hundred, and three-two-four-three-fifty has made application for variation order number one-one-six-two-oh-two-five. Where the premises described as ten twenty-three Breezy Point Road and Whiskey Ditch Road. The purpose is to reduce the site area of all proposed lots and one residual lot in the A forty agricultural limited zone as part of the conditions within conditionally approved subdivision number S twenty-five-three-oh-three-nine. Now therefore be it resolved that variation order one-one-six-two-oh-two-five be hereby approved by council with the following conditions, which are the standard two read out by the planner. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Slank, secondar.
We make sure that that greater than sign is corrected.
Where I mean?
No.
Counselor Slanker brought that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The greater or less than sign needs to be corrected.
That was, um- One-one-nine?
One-one-six.
Six.
Excuse me, we're having trouble hearing up here.
Yeah. We're gonna amend that because the sign is actually more than what it's supposed to be, less than four. Sorry, there are four, yeah, sorry for that. Correct, acceptable, with a memorable edit of.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Dornboss. Um, any questions? Oh, I have a mover, Counselor Siker, secondar. Oh, Deputy Mayor Morecking. Any further comments by council? All those in favor? The unanimous, that is carried. Resolution four-point-nine for variation order one-one-nine-two-oh-two-five. Where is the applicant owner of tax rolls number five-three-seven-five-hundred, five-three-seven-one-hundred, has made application for variation order number one-one-nine-two-oh-two-five. For the premises described as four, five-oh-four Corin Avenue and seven-oh-one-
Oh, he's still on the forward dot stick, he's just, there's something I could-
No, we just removed them.
Okay, I'll just turn it off.
Okay.
The purpose is to allow for a Kodiak Shelter Garage accessory structure to be constructed on the subject property. Therefore, be it resolved that variation order number one-one-nine-two-oh-two-five be hereby approved by council with the following conditions, which are the standard and read out by the planner. Could I have a mover, please?
Come on.
Counselor Hunt, seconded by Counselor Dornboss. Are there any comments or questions by council? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor? That is unanimous, that is carried. Item four-point-ten. Resolution for conditional use fifty-six-two-oh-two-five. Where is the applicant owner of tax roll three-one-five-five-zero-zero has made application for conditional use fifty-six-two-oh-two-five for the premises described as one-one-two Calder Road. The purpose is to allow a daycare center, brackets kindergarten, on the subject property, Mapleton School, in the re- rural residential zone. Therefore, be it resolved that conditional use fifty-six-two-oh-two-five be hereby approved by council with the following conditions, and they were all read out by the planner. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Dornboss. Seconded by Counselor Siker. Are there any further questions or comments?
Is there a date of when, this for twenty-twenty-six, I don't have this brace?
I'm actually not aware of the order.
If it's, just so that, you know, sure the residents wouldn't want to know when that would be operational for?
Um, from the perspective matter, it can be operational immediately. So, like, day after, it's not a problem for them to do it in a minute.
Okay, all those in favor? The unanimous, that is carried. Now, the resolution for decision for subdivision S twenty-five-three-one-two-zero has been tabled until January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-six. Resolution for decision for zoning bylaw amendment four-four-two-three, seventh reading, has been tabled until January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-six. And third reading of zoning bylaw amendment number four-four-two-three has been tabled until January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-six. Okay, that ends the planning portion. Thank you, Madam Planner. We don't see you. How about Merry Christmas?
Yeah.
I don't.
Too.
Yeah, see you next year.
Hell, yes, see you next year.
Merry Christmas to you.
Adoption of the minutes. We resolve that council adopt the November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty- the council, the minutes as presented. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Dornboss, secondar, Counselor Hunt. Any errors or omissions? All those in favor? Unanimous, that is carried. We have no reception of delegations, bylaws and policy, bylaw number four-four-two-seven, verb closure and sale. First reading. Um, we had the information attached. Does anybody in admin wish to speak to this matter?
Uh, very briefly, this is the bylaw that, uh, I had brought forward in R F P at previous council meeting, uh, related to the road adjacent to the Petersfield Garage. This is the first reading of the bylaw. There was just a highlighted item there. Council wanted to assign a dollar value for the sale, potential sale of that road. But following first reading, this would have to be circulated with community planning to receive, uh, the remarks and various provincial departments may have with mines and minerals, or the wording of the bylaw, and whether or not a plan- And whether or not a plan survey would be needed. And if it is needed, it would be uh the cost would be incurred by the applicant in this case and not the.
Okay, any other questions? We resolve that council your first reading to bylaw four two seven being a bylaw to close municipal road and authorize the sale of the land as presented. Could I have a mover please? Counselor Hunt, secondar. Counselor Slaker, any further comments? All in favor? Unanimous that is carried. Oh, I'm sorry, if I may, going back on this. Information, the applications that were tabled. Would it be possible to have that heritage branch? Correct their um comments referring to it as Clear Lake?
I will ask them maybe for some clarifications, yet we are not in the same area. Yeah.
Okay.
I will, I will point you to it and we will see what they will say about it. They might. Uh ask the same assessment. Also for that area that they will check to and they they might even remove that. I will ask for the applicant also to send. The plan B Sam to the MTI. Maybe they will just answer it. Positively on it.
Okay.
Yeah, awesome.
Thank you. Sorry, that's out of order, so that one.
Yeah.
Forgot about it. Um seven point two policy G N thirty one respectful workplace amendment. Yeah. It was unanimous, all in favor? Um. Policy number G N thirty one respectful workplace amendment. Everything is attached. I want to thank you. The C A O for expanding on it. Great document and the very whole we have brings this up to date.
Yeah. Thank you.
Does con, you. Does council have any comments on it?
Looks very good.
Yeah, it is. Could I have a mover? Be resolved that council adopt policy number G N thirty one respectful workplace as amended. Could I have a mover please? Counselor Doran Boss, secondar. Counselor Feeblecorn, any further comments, questions, all in favor? The unanimous that is carried. Next item, check detail report approval of all counts. Be resolved that council approve the December fifth, twenty twenty five check detail report as presented. Could I have a? Mover please? Deputy Mayor Morecky, secondar. Counselor Slaker, any comments by counselor? By councils? All those in favor? Unanimous that is carried. Correspondence for action. Selkirk Bunchman's Curling Championship sponsorship request. Um this is the first we've ever had of this, Mr. Selkirk. Um. Is there any concern if we table this map file this information?
Yeah, tabling is okay.
We'll file for, let me file it for information. Selkirk Lift Bridge. Be resolved that be authorized to participate in round three virtual meeting be held Jan, being held January twenty twenty six. Regarding the Selkirk Lift Bridge over P R two oh four. Is anyone interested to attend? We had filed this the last, all of them so far for info. Is everybody fine with that? Okay, filed your information. Our daily soup. Kitchen Christmas dinner, December eighteenth. You know, I read this. I think it's, they wanted us to put the notice of. On our website to attend. We've never been invited. To the soup kitchen for a dinner.
I thought last year we were invited there just for uh. Like an attendance thing.
Not. That I recall.
That's.
That's constant.
Yeah, it's a great, great asset. I wouldn't be opposed to having something like that.
So who would like to attend?
I will be able to attend, but to have something posted saying, hey.
Well, I think they have a mailing list that I I don't, I've never seen this one.
Yeah, maybe.
Deputy Mayor Morecky.
It doesn't really say if anyone can.
No.
Not the way I read it. I think you're right, Matt. Well, they actually have to put it out on our social media.
Yeah, not to have. There's no formal invitation.
Says all are welcome, so.
It says, please share this information and Merry Christ, that says everybody's welcome, but it says, please share this information and Merry Christmas.
Obviously, this is not the.
No. So well.
Put the poster on our website. Your own website.
Lisa, is that fine? For sure to just put it.
Yeah.
Advertise.
Yeah.
Okay, to be advertised. Correspondence for information. Does anybody have any comments or questions on the information?
I have a question on the Good Roads. Uh looks that we were awarded a Good Roads and maybe Sir Hat knows something about this. It's not for pavement, it's for gravel.
It's for gravel, yeah.
Alright.
I have the um parameters here to read. And the second award was most improved, so it goes by a score. So there's about uh. Six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve things that they look for in a gravel road comfort and safety at posted speed. Uniformity of gravel or uniformity of grade gravel. Minimum width twenty feet, smooth surface to crown, dust control in populated areas. Uh condition of signage, meaning safety road scientific numbers. Your road slope, which is next to your road, uh three to one, your back slopes, one and a half to one. And then condition of ditches, whether they're cut all the way through, no, no blockage, adequate drainage. Uh condition of culverts and then maintenance of grass weeds, bush removal and that kind of stuff for a hundred points, so. And each one's averaging, you know, ten to fifteen points per item, so. And I think the last time we won it and we won both, the overall was. We were sued uh during Bullwood because we had the picture taken with um. One of the representatives with the new grader that we had. Out in, out in the parking lot. So that's five, five, four, four, five years ago. And hopefully everyone, most people can attend. It's in Brandon this year. Uh last year, Rockwood won. And they had. All of their council was there, plus a few of their public works employees, I think five or six public works employees actually, so. It's kudos to the, to the, to the public works. Good job and uh. And the hard work that they do. Thank you.
That's Slaker.
Yeah, I would like to say uh thank you and congratulations to Trevor, the public works manager and all that stuff. I know we get a little dizzy every once in a while about roads, so if we're winning the most improved. I give all that credit to him, so hats off to him and his staff.
And um. Madame Mary, I'd like to add that. Uh you, you know, the roads are uh. Are lightning rods in municipalities that they get a lot of uh, a lot of calls come, a lot of council uh. Uh gets involved and. Uh Trevor and Marcel and their team worked really hard to. Uh to make our roads better. They. Uh they had some history input from. Uh Counselor Hunt. Uh they went through some stressful times with roads. Uh it's great for them to get uh. Uh two awards and uh and we're looking for Brandon to send four or five public works. Uh staff to Brandon for, for the award. Uh. Next year and, and for all of us to attend Good Roads too, so.
What about ask the question? I didn't expect all that information, so. Excellent.
Okay, I have a question on the John Q twenty twenty four twenty five annual report. Thank you. Counselor Slaker, believe you submit. Mm hmm, thank you. My question on the expense part. Is project management fees for twenty twenty five is ten point? Nine million? And then subcontracts is a million and thirty six dollars.
Call for the daycare.
So the management fees.
Not, not management fee, that's the uh lady that runs it. It looks towards the people that help develop projects. And we still made a lot of money from the projects, so.
You made money from the projects?
Mm hmm.
How much money did you make for the project?
I don't know, Matt, so I didn't remember that. I apologize. So I'm sure you could send the director your question directly and she'd be happy to break it right down for.
Well, she, Colleen Sklar's left though, right?
Pardon?
Colleen's left.
No, she has not.
She's retired.
No. Still there.
In the report.
Mm hmm.
Prepare till the end of the month.
Oh, to the end of the month, okay. No, I just wondered why all these contracts, so the project manner fee is just for the daycares?
Not the main project we did this year, yep.
But subcontracts, what does that entail?
I don't know, Matt, but I'll have her reach out to you and answer your question.
Well, you're on board now. You're a hard member on the board.
I don't want to mess it up and you're very detailed, so I don't want to give you the wrong information. So I'll have her email you the answers. And then you'll have it direct from the board certainly.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on the information items? No, they're unfinished business, new business. The twenty twenty six emergency response plan adoption. Which I believe that is required by the end of the year. And I would assume Sherry, well, she's got all her certificates, worked hard on this and with Jordan. I know it's a hundred and seventy five pages long. And I don't think council had a chance to read all of it.
I tried. Quite the document. Very detailed.
It's an excellent document. Um so. We'll do emergency response plan adoption. Where is the municipal emergency coordinator has prepared the twenty twenty six emergency response plan? For the RM of Saint Andrews presented to, presented it to council. And reasonably believes that it will meet the requirements of the emergency. And the local authorities emergency planning and preparedness regulation. And recommends that it be approved and submitted to emergency measures organization. Therefore be it resolved that council hereby accepts the recommendation. And approves the twenty twenty six emergency response plan for the RM of Saint Andrews as presented. Could I have a mover please?
Move that.
Counselor Doran Boss, secondar. Counselor Mondor, are there any questions by council? All those in favor? Unanimous that is carried. Oran for twenty twenty five. Be resolved that in accordance with section one seventy three one of the municipal act, that the council of the RM of Saint Andrews established a line of credit. At access credit union Selkirk branch in order to meet current expenditures of the corporation. To the maximum of eight million for the year twenty twenty five. And further be it resolved that the mayor and C A O be authorized to sign the required documents. Could I have a mover please? Counselor Mondor, secondar. Deputy Mayor Morecky, any questions?
I can speak to it a, a bit. Uh so what happens is. As you get your revenue from your, your taxes at the start of every. Tax year and as. As the uh, I'm using my hands as a graph here, I'm looking on a TV. As the year goes on, the amount you have in the bank from your tax revenue. Uh goes down. And you may have an expenditure where you don't have enough in the, the bank because it's getting um. Uh. Money played in October, uh you know, at the end of. October when we have our, our tax time, so maybe another. Uh twelve million dollars goes in at the end of October and we might not have enough to cover it. At some point during the year, so you start off with a full amount and as the year goes on, you spend, you spend on. Roads etcetera and that, so we, we've uh, we've had a. Uh line of credit here to access that if, if we need to. Use money for that and we would pay interest. And then when we get, when our uh, our tax count gets replenished. Then we're flush and we're able to pay that back.
That'll be to your. Okay, we have Counselor Mondor, Deputy Mayor Morecky, move your sector. Any other questions by council? All those in favor? That is unanimous is Carrie. Resolution for borrowing for twenty twenty six. Be resolved that in accordance with section one seventy three one of the municipal act. That the council of the RM of Saint Andrews established a line of credit at access credit union Selkirk branch. In order to meet the current expenditures of the corporation to the maximum of eight million for the year twenty twenty six. And further be it resolved that the mayor and C A O be authorized to sign the required documents. Could I have a mover please? Counselor Darn Boss, secondar. Counselor Month. Uh Counselor Feeblecorn.
Are you speaking to this as well or?
Oh, this river road?
No, no, just for the, the second for twenty twenty six. Is this?
Oh, same thing.
Yeah.
So, so what happened is, is Carrie just started. This year and, and she said that we hadn't put in for it. So to, to, to meet all the obligations, she put in for twenty five and now she's putting in for twenty six. So she finds some housekeeping matters that weren't, you know, that there were some gaps in that that weren't taken care of. So it's the same thing for, for both years. Twenty twenty five's finished and.
That's right.
So can I just ask for clarification? I know we talked about it when we got to our financial. Um. Plan back, but so we used to borrow. Money against the reserves. And then we like use that money, that way we're not paying interest.
Well.
So. You know, it, rather than paying interest, but then there was a problem with the auditor because then he says that money is not. In your reserve.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll speak to that. Uh so, so what we did is we had uh. Uh you know, we, we'd have eight or ten million dollars in reserve instead of going to our. Uh a credit line to take that money because it would cost interest. Council at the time said, let's just take it from the reserve. So then the auditor's coming in, our audit is, the twenty twenty two is coming in, in a week. Uh will be coming to council. So what happens? When you use your reserve funds to, instead of a line of credit. When the audits done, they go, well, it says. You have eight million in reserves, but when we look at your bank account, there's only six million. So there's a uh. So now we have to make a decision. There's a cost to it because you're paying interest, but interest rates are lower. Right now, when they're high, it, it might be, you know, if they're eight or nine percent, you might go, this is costing too much annually. On the other hand, I have to explain to council and council has to explain to residents. How on paper we say we have eight million or ten million in, in the reserve. But actually, there's only four million in the bank. So that's a really hard for me as a C A O and I've done it at other R M's. It's really hard for me to explain to council. It's like, what do you mean we don't have the money? In our reserve fund. And then if you think it's hard to explain to council as a counselor or a mayor, try to explain it to your residents and they go. You know, we, we heard that uh our reserves funds don't have the money in the account. And you, and you try to explain, well, we borrowed that money to meet these gaps in. Uh you know, before taxes are replenished. So yeah, that, it says on paper, there's eight million in there, but there's only six. So currently, um. Our finance director is a chartered, a certified accountant. Uh I've never liked that wherever I've been where we don't. Have the actual money in the reserve and I asked for her opinion on it and, and she's not fond of it neither. If, you know, if, if uh. If interest rates are become higher, we might come back to council and go, you know, it's costing us a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. In interest to operate, we think we can. Borrow it out of the reserves, right? And then you remember when you have money in reserves, you're making interest on that too.
Though I understand that, it just that, you know. Businesses do that, you know, borrow against their. Reserves, whatever, but I know this isn't, this municipal accounting is way different, but. I agree with you. If interest rates were different, it would be.
Yeah. I, I, and I think, you know, if the interest rates are higher, what we really have to do is have a. A good explanation for the residents. On how we do this and, and be very transparent on it and. And we, we'd have to probably get someone to help us on how we would explain it, right?
Yeah, like the money's there, it's just that it's. It's, it's, you know, being used until taxes come in. And I hate that, counselor. I hate using our, our reserves for operating. It's just not. Yeah, well. But if it saves us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or whatever with interest rates were high, like I say, that's a different story, but I just want the information and. The public to hear too, so let's. And thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, uh, we had Counselor Dornvoss, Counselor Notmover, and secondar. Any further questions? All those in favor? Unanimous, that is Carrie. Next item, twelve point four, the twenty twenty-six interim operating budget resolution. Be it resolved that council of the RM of St. Andrews, in accordance with section one sixty-three of the municipal act, adopt the interim operating budget to be effective only until such time as council adopts the twenty twenty-six fiscal year budget. Now therefore be it resolved that the following interim operating budget be hereby approved. General government services, six hundred and thirty-five thousand. Protective services, five hundred thousand. Transportation services, two million, one hundred and fifty. Environmental health services, three hundred and thirty thousand. Public health welfare services, fifteen thousand. Environmental development services, forty-five thousand. Economic development services, almost hundred thousand. Recreation and culture services, two hundred and fifty thousand. Fiscal ser- oop, fiscal services, one point five million. For a total of five million, five hundred and twenty-five thousand. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Dornvoss, secondar. Seconders. Counselor Peabecorn, any questions, or if you want to speak?
I'll, I'll speak to that. So this is, is just the, we're not doing the budget. And usually never do the budget until, uh, into the next year, so we need money to operate. However, I want to tell council, we will be doing, uh, road, uh, the roads, so we'll be coming to talk to council about stabilization, the millings, uh, the asphalt paving of the roads in January. And, uh, the deadline for staff administration to submit all their budget numbers to, uh, to Carrie, our finance director, is, I believe, on Friday, that they have to have their final numbers in to what they're doing, and I've asked her to, uh, let's get the numbers published for council so they can get it in their calendars, and, uh, she's got numbers, uh, that, that she's going to run by me, but you can expect to come uh, for your budget meetings in January this year. And the financial plan to go out, uh, you know, we're hoping for mid-February, the start of March, so that's all in play. We're, we're ready to go. It's not a myth. It's actually in play.
That is wonderful, versus scrambling for, to meet the deadline of May fifteenth.
Yeah.
And cutting it so close. Counselor Siker?
Okay, what did you say then about the road? We're gonna meet about the road and what?
Well, well, the road budget, too. We're gonna do the, the, the roads separately from the full budget, and get the roads in place and get tenders out as we're doing the other budgets, so you'll know your roads, uh, uh, what we're doing for roads before our budget is actually finalized.
And we're doing that when?
In, in January.
We already have that list, right? Um, Chief of Public Works gave us an email kind of indicating on what roads might, might be, uh.
Well, we haven't, we.
No, no, that email came from a staff member that sort of never sent it out. That's to be completely disregarded. There was an email about that. Throw that right out.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, so, so the roads, we will be coming. We have a list of roads from last year, but you, you have to remember that, uh, uh, sometimes after the snow, uh, roads change, right? So we have our road list from last year, the ones that were next on the list. We have counselors submissions from last year, so we'll have those to the list. Then we'll go back to council and say, and here's what's on our list. We'll also put service tracker input into the list, right, to, to generate ratings. And then we'll come to council and, and we'll say, uh, you know, do you have anything? We, you know, we came to council and we said, we're gonna give you some input, right? And we did a year of that, and, and we've had from, some input from council. So we're gonna come again, and we're gonna go, council, you're the ones that are out there answering questions in that, what roads do you think you, you did it last year, we'll get that. And then we'll bring it to, uh, uh, to council for approval, and uh, so everyone, you'll have service tracker input, you'll have council input, you'll have our, our staff going out on the road input. We're looking to have some input, uh, also from, uh, some private contractors this year, so a number of different things.
That's Siker.
We'll be doing that at the beginning of January?
Yeah.
First meeting up?
Well, it would be, it won't be at a council meeting. It'll be, we'll schedule meetings.
But that kind of, I thought before, we were gonna do that the end of November into December, but now we're into January. That's what I'm asking.
Okay.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Morecky?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I'm thrilled that we're moving forward on this. Uh, we're getting this done in, in January, and I'm optimistic that the tenders will be out in early February. Uh, that gives contractors, uh, uh, a heads up, and hopefully we'll get, uh, a better deal, so to speak, on the road repair reconstruction by giving the contractors early notice. And, uh, I'm hoping that this will translate into an early construction season, perhaps, bring, uh, as soon as the frost gets over the ground, rather than, uh, rather than what happened this year, when we, uh, came in, uh, just under the wire, which was, it was, it was close.
So, so we had some, you know, and I can explain that, we had some, some changes. That was the first time we used road stabilization, right, the, the new products, so it was, uh, 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 there's a road stabilization in the asphalt paving, and it's kind of a blend of two tenders you have to put out now. Uh, so that caused some delays. Uh, we did, I, I believe we did get a good price because the, the, uh, the city of Winnipeg didn't put out as much work this year. So then it left, uh, you know, big companies, we had Maple Leaf, uh, 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 do our work, uh, this year. And what happened is, usually they're working right till the end on big contracts for these companies for the province or the city, and not as much work went out, so I, I know most of the contractors I've dealt with, uh, um, all of them, you know, over the years, and, and so there was, we did get some good bits. But where you are definitely right is, we're going to the wire, so I am, as the C M O, a, a C A O, I'm sweating, as, you know, hoping the snow doesn't fly early because we're going to the wire, and I'm getting most of you, uh, some of you are probably just thinking it, others of you are phoning and going, what's going on? Are we gonna get finished here, right? And, uh, so very correct, uh, deputy mayor, that, that we took it to the wire. But we have experience with stabilization now, uh, we can see how it works, and, and another new thing that we did this year, uh, is we did millings. And, uh, we did about, I believe, two hundred thousand dollars worth of millings on the road, which, uh, uh, will save us money for, uh, a dust control next year. And as we know, as has been stated, millings last forever. Uh, Counselor Hunter. And, uh, so we, we've done millings, and, uh, and I've been on the road with Brayden. And, uh, and there was some millings that we had done earlier, and Brayden, uh, you know, has, has some experience in, 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 in his past career here, uh, with roads, and, and he was surprised how, how the millings were holding out, so uh, it was Counselor Hunt and Brayden and myself were, were out and about that they, uh, taking a look at things, so I, I, I think the, uh, the roads are going to be better, better for St. Andrews, even though we won two awards, we're gonna be getting better and better in that.
There was a TV, sorry, there was a TV thing not long ago. Other R M's were using, uh, recycled tires in the roads that gave a report?
That was for base.
Oh.
That was for base, rather than, we used to use rock and geotech and rock, and then we used the, um,
Stabilization.
The stabilization, that, and then some people were using tires. Winnipeg Beach did a bid project because then it's supposed to drain better, but I don't know, I don't think it's any better for what it cost and time it took. Like, it took money, or the stabilization product, program we use this year, it's done in one or two or three days. No one's inconvenienced.
Yeah.
Counselor Dornvoss?
Yeah, I just wanted, I know, we're too far on topic here, but, uh, with the road stabilization, have you had any feedback from, like, Trevor? Any residents? Any of the counselors had any feedback on the stabilization portion of it itself?
Well, you could drive, I, well, you could drive on the road, like, two hours after they, uh, were done packing it with the, uh, with the roller, like, it was amazing. And then, uh, you know, overnight it, it set up, you could drive out almost any, anything on the road.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, like.
Yeah, sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to point out that, uh, her base was, uh, uh, onsite for, actually, uh, they had twenty-three working days. They completed all the work in, in that window, so, uh, uh, you know, it was, uh, it was something that didn't inconvenience, uh, the residents, uh, that much because, uh, it wasn't a drawn-out process.
And they were super respectful of everybody's property that, you know, the, the roads that they lived. Like, they didn't leave any garbage, any, they didn't park their, uh, equipment anywhere that they weren't supposed to be, they were very mindful of, uh, what they were doing, so.
Yeah, I, I, I think we had a good season for roads, except, except it was, went to the wire.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Next item is special meeting of council, December twenty-second. Be it resolved that a special meeting of council be held on Monday, December twenty-second at noon via Zoom meeting to approve the check detail report. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Dornvoss, secondar. Counselor Mandor, all those in favor? Unanimous, that is Carrie. Um, you had mentioned the auditor. Our audit will be done.
Our audit is done.
Okay, but we have a.
And we're going to put it on tonight, but we want the auditor to come. And my, you, uh, you know, I thought we would be having a long planning hearing, so I told the auditor, I, 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 I can't tell you what time he'll be on. I didn't want him, you know, you know, a senior partner at an audit firm uh, waiting all night to get on for our meeting. So we're planning to have him on, uh, August fifteenth from.
December fifteenth.
Or, December fifteenth.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree, but I'm running the show here. December fifteenth, and, uh, uh, we would do the audit from four-thirty to five-thirty. He'll zoom in so you can ask him, uh, questions. Carrie will be here. I'm very confident in, in Carrie and her knowledge of our, uh, you know, in her short time, less than a year here, she's very, very knowledgeable about our finances, and every day is getting, uh, very experienced with the R M.
Yeah, the council meeting is December fifteenth at five-thirty, so we will have the auditor come at four-thirty.
And what year is this for?
Twenty twenty-two.
Because then we have to pass it.
And then.
By, um.
It's a draft form. Yeah.
We have to have it passed at the council meeting, should be filed, and the sooner we do it, the sooner we'll get our gas tax money.
Yeah, and, and, uh, well, we got half the gas tax money, uh, for every year. Uh, but we, we, we expect the twenty-three and twenty-four to come out shortly, too. We're all ready to go on that. Uh, we've been working hard on it, so when we get the twenty-two done, then you take numbers from the end of twenty-two, and you plug it in twenty, twenty-three, but we've done all the work for that. And then that one will get done, and we're able to do twenty-four, so, uh, the late work for twenty-three and twenty-four, I would say, is, is ninety-five percent done, and, and we've got three people working on it, so. Uh, and, and twenty twenty-two was, uh, there was a, you know, and, and we're transparent. We've, uh, told the public, I've told council, we had a lot of cleanup to do on, on twenty twenty-two.
Yep. Okay, that was voted on, right? Okay. Next item is the R F D letter of support request. Six, six-nine River Road, that's tapped on the red. Has everyone read the attached, they're asking for a letter of support? Do you have any comments? I think this is an excellent, excellent.
Long time coming. That's a great idea, right?
Very good idea.
Some administrative comments. Uh, the property is zoned. Uh, R T, Recreation Tourism, multifamily is already permitted use there. The concerns are arising from the elevation of the building. So we have the option to require them to sign that liability waiver or enter a development agreement if it's necessary. The province has indicated they have no concerns, though, provided it's, you know, not structural in nature, and they're not changing the footprint of the building, so.
Okay.
Just one thing.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Uh, yeah, just one thing. In nineteen ninety-seven, when we had the flood, uh, they did sandbag around the building, but the water never reached the sandbag in the van, and so, uh, uh, it's pretty darn close, but just a hair above the, uh, the floodwater, so.
Okay, I'll read the resolution. Where, as the owner of six-six-nine River Road intends to complete renovations to the existing former motel building and convert the suites into apartment units. And whereas the property is located within a designated flood risk area and does not meet current flood protection level required by the province of Manitoba. And whereas Manitoba Transportation Infrastructure has advised that it has no concern with the proposed work, providing the existing building footbridge is not altered, and no structural renovations are undertaken that may affect the foundation or exterior load-bearing structure. And whereas the zoning bylaw allows council to grant exemptions to current flood protection requirements for existing permanent structures, and further allows council to require the owner to sign a liability waiver releasing the municipality from damages related to flooding. And whereas the Red River Planning District has requested confirmation from the municipality that it is aware of the non-conforming flood protection condition and has no concerns with the proposed re-establishment of the use subject to any conditions council may wish to impose. Now therefore be it resolved that council of the RM of St. Andrews conform its support for the proposed renovations and conversion of the former motel at six-six-nine River Road into apartment unit. Acknowledging the existing non-conforming flood protection condition and confirming that council has no objection to the re-establishment of use subject to any conditions council may wish to impose, including the option of requiring the owner to sign a liability waiver as permitted under the zoning bylaw. And be it further resolved that this resolution serves council's formal confirmation to the Red River Planning District for the purposes of issuing the required building permit. Could I have a mover, please? I'll move that. Counselor Dornvoss, seconded by Counselor Siker. Any further comments or questions by council? I'm confident Brayden has everything, but that's.
If there's any conditions that we want to impose, now would be the time to advise in the resolution, if we want that liability waiver, or at least some direction for myself to know which way to proceed, yeah.
Well, I think we should have the liability waiver, but that's in here.
Yeah, yeah, just if, if, it was written like as proposed, I, I wasn't sure how the discussion would go, so.
Okay, I think we need that waiver for sure.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Uh, this is great, those buildings there are nice, or these, this is gonna be, he's doing, on, on doing it, it's gonna be great to chat with us. Well, any further comments or questions? All those in favor? Unanimous, that is Carrie. Next item, holiday closure. Be it resolved that council of the RM of St. Andrews offers the administration of public works offices to be closed on December nineteenth at three P M as an appreciation to staff and allow for a staff get-together to celebrate the holiday season. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Dornvoss, secondar. Seconder, Deputy Mayor Morecky, any comments by council? All in favor? Unanimous, that is Carrie.
Uh, and Madam Mayor, what we'll do is we'll put a sign on the door, and, uh, with a phone number on it, if anyone comes and they have an emergency problem, they'll phone the number, we'll be in here, and, and, uh, we'll be answered at the door. And just to, uh, one of the reasons we're doing this besides holiday spirit is for a, a culture shift for, for the staff at the R M. We're, we're trying to get a, a shift with col-, uh, the culture to participate more with each other and, and, uh, and think back to, uh, a time when, when workplaces did more things with each other, and then when you work, you tend to have, uh, each other's back and work better together, so you know, it's just a, a, a part of putting all the, the moving. you know, it's just a, a, a part of putting all the, the moving pieces together, uh, to, we're working on changing our culture.
Wonderful, because it's been a long time that anybody got together here.
Yeah.
Three of the girls I saw the weekend off together. Nice to see you. Kind of different. Their name. Okay, that was voted on. Yep, thank you. So then be it resolved that the council meeting be adjourned at seven oh two P M. But I have a mover please. Councillor Dornvoss, seconder. Councillor Feeblecorn, all in favor? Carrie, have a good evening, everyone.
Recording stopped.